Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. With clerk absent this evening, I'm going to have Treasure Horning take the role of the clerk.
Trustee Jermaine?
Here.
Trustee Kalani?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
Treasure Horning here, and our clerk is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved, support.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Be none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Call of the public, anybody tonight, a call of the public? Anyone want to come up and say anything?
Drop duty.
Do you know, call of the public?
Retrist your vote.
We will move on to item number six is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Treasure Horning, second by Trustee Petrucci. Any discussion? Be none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is pending business, 2015 board and meeting dates. James, did you say this is a resolution?
It is a resolution required by statute, so I took it off the consent agenda.
So I'll entertain a motion for the resolution for 2015 meeting date.
I'll make that, I'll move that resolution.
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Kalani, second by Treasure Horning. Any discussion? Be none, I'll have Treasure Horning please call the role.
Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Trustee Kalani?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Treasure Horning, yes, and Larry's absent.
Thank you. Item number eight is sewer and water rates for 2015. This is also a resolution. It's required. Manager Wiggman, do you have any comments before we go into this resolution?
This does carry out the board's previous discussion to do one increase for next year. One thing that we didn't talk about, I just want to acknowledge, is that one of the water rates, one of the pieces did go up quarterly. So carrying out the board's intent, this also reflects that that, that piece of the water rates will only go up once for the year. So sewer water rate, one increase for the year, it'll be that way for the entire year.
And that sewer rate came from the county's rate study?
Well, this sewer rate still follows our rate study of a couple of years ago, Row. And the sewer, the county sewer rate increase exceeded the assumptions we made. So when we do the next rate study, we'll have some, a little bit more catching up to do.
And I had a question for you earlier. Wasn't the, how do our sewer rates compare with comparable-sized communities and, and customers in terms of overall rates?
When we conducted the rate study a few years ago, we did a survey of other communities around us. We found that by the time the four, all five years of the rates were implemented, our rates would be in the middle third of the other communities around us for a similar bill. So there's many communities that are more, many communities that are less, we're kind of right there in the middle. We started out as one of the lower rates communities.
And I guess my other question is, you know, several years ago, we undertook a study called the Boyle Model, which dealt with actuarial accounts in terms of our, paying off our sewer bonds. Is there, does this resolution take into consideration the number of, you know, the rates? Is there a portion of the rates that cover those costs associated with the Boyle Model at all?
Rates did partially feed into that Boyle Model in order to cash flow the bond payments. But it was not a significant amount. So that may help us in the end when we go to do the next rate study and we have to make up for the county rates going up. Given that if the pending sale of the land goes through, obviously that cash flow looks better and better. So a small piece of it is related to it, yes.
Any other questions, comments?
This is not really Jermaine to the subject. However, I just wanted to ask if you know, James, how many REUs we've sold this year compared to what we're trying to?
I could send that to him an email tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'll look it up tomorrow and send it, okay?
Can't recall, offhand.
But we have sold a few, so I'll look it up, email it.
Year, so.
Okay, I'll email it.
Thank you.
I'll move the resolution setting forth the sewer and water fee rates and charges for 2015.
Mr. Clerk? Motion by Trustee Harper, second by Trustee Jermaine. Any other comments or questions? Be none, I'll have Treasure, please call the role.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Treasure Horning, yes. Trustee Kalani?
Yes.
Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Clerk Hobson's absent. It passes.
Thank you. Item number nine is board reports. We start tonight with Trustee Petrucci.
Last Saturday, the fire department had their Santa Day, and I just want to report that several hundred little kids went through Santa Day and saw Santa Claus again. So I'd like to thank the fire department for doing that. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Treasure Horning?
Nothing except for, you know, the kids are able to mail their letters straight to Santa here at the township hall. And we've had about 20, 30 kids sign up and send them straight on. That's all for me.
Thank you. Trustee Kalani?
I just want to thank the staff and administration. We had a great holiday party last week. And I'd like to thank the Majestic and Mr. Fountain Supervisor for hosting our annual Christmas holiday event out at the Majestic Golf Course. I think it was a great time to get to know some of the staff and the camaraderie. It's, it's, it was very nice. So I just want to let the staff know, we appreciate all their hard work for the year, and it was an excellent holiday event.
Thank you. Trustee Jermaine?
I would just echo Joe's comments, otherwise I have nothing else.
Thank you. Trustee Harper?
No report.
On behalf of the board, I have three proclamations this evening for those who have served on previous boards. And I'm not going to read them in full, and I will present these to them themselves. But Dave Kalanowski for being on the zoning board of appeals from January of 1999 until this year. We had Gary Crebel, who was on the ZBA from January 1995 until this past year. And Kathleen Paul, who was on the board of review for the last two years. But again, as you can tell, these people have been putting 20, 15 to 20 years into serving our community. They deserve a little recognition and thank them for all their hard work. That's all I have this evening. Move on to manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just a couple of things to highlight from the operation report. You, of course, have seen the communication on Lake Tyrone Sewer. Obviously more to come on that, and I'll keep you posted as information comes in. Just want to acknowledge that the special assessment hearings that we said we were anticipating for January, obviously will not be happening then until they make a decision about what, how to move forward. So that'll be delayed at least a month or two while that's going on. We'll keep you posted. And then we did have some preliminary conversations with Tom Demond, President of the Board of Education, about our strategic plan initiative to meet jointly with the Board of Education next year. There was, in concept, I think everybody was in agreement, it's a good idea. The idea would be to start maybe with something less formal of a, maybe twice next year, one time. We go to their meeting and visit them with a simple reception, no agenda for about a half hour before their regular meeting, and then vice versa later in the year. So they were thinking that February, March would be a good timeframe. We'll put some dates out there as to when their meetings are. They, I think they are meeting just once a month during February, March, but more to come on that. Otherwise, happy to answer any questions you may have.
James, do we have a meet and greet with the chamber in the future here?
We are hosting it here in January, their meeting, and there's a possibility of a second. We may be hosting that. It's a lunch and learn. We're hosting the luncheon here in January, and we may be doing it again later in the year.
Can you send us the, resend those dates to all of us?
For the lunch and learn or for the?
Yeah, sure. Appreciate that.
I knew that was coming up. I think it's the first or second.
Usually be the second Thursday.
Thursday in January.
In January, so.
Second Thursday.
Anything else for Manager Wiggman? Be none, we will go on to information and discussion, and we'll, 11A is Mayberry Purchase Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I talked about this at a previous manager's report. And just received confirmation last week from the, from Mayberry about what they'd be asking. The general terms of what they'd be looking for are in my memo there, and they relate to amending the purchase agreement to allow them to be able to follow through on a sale with a third party who's an apartment developer that's interested in developing multifamily on the north side, and on the back part of the north side. And Mayberry would still keep the frontage for commercial use down the road that they don't have specific plans for. Their concern is that because of the way the purchase agreement was structured, if they close on the first property, there's obviously timelines that cascade after that. And they think that this third party is interested in moving, you know, much faster than they're ready to, and they would like to have some consideration for an exception for that timeline being so quick following the first closing. I think, you know, we talked a little bit before my manager's report at another meeting that given that it's two different parcels on opposite sides of the road, perhaps that, you know, didn't give us as much heartburn, and that we might be able to work something out about that. There was some conversation here about, obviously wanting to make sure that both developments were, you know, mutually beneficial or complimentary to each other from a design perspective, from a traffic perspective. And we would want to ensure that, of course. So I wanted to bring that back to the board and just have further dialogue and see if the board, if there was some consensus about making some allowance for this to go forward in a way that still protected our interest. The other thing going here for us, I suppose, is that they're interested in developing the back part of the parcel before the front part, which would normally, the opposite, if the opposite would be our concern, is that the risk is that they let the back part go with the REUs that go with it. If they're developing the back part and leaving the more valuable front part as the next phase of development, that, that gives us a little bit more security. Any thoughts, consensus of the board on that proposal from them? If it pleases the board or there's some consensus around that, we, of course, would draft up the language related to amending that purchase agreement.
Well, the first thing that comes to mind is you're going to have separate ownership, and how do you make that meld together? Because the previous developer had it all as one, through the pattern book. And how would you, what are your thoughts and how that's going to kind of play out? So there's, there is that consistency between them.
I suppose you could do a number of ways, and it would, I mean, obviously the board is in the driver's seat on this, on what you'd like to see. And given that they are two different parcels, I don't know if we, when we became the owners of it and the sellers of it, whether we were married to the concept that these two parcels will always go together as one development, or whether we were willing to accept at that time that these could potentially be sold as two different developments to two different parties. If, if we, if the board wants to see that as one PD altogether, then that may have an impact here in that, you know, they'd obviously have to go through the PD process with the whole thing on paper. Or if you're okay with, you know, treating both sides of the road separately, the lesser impact would be to require a PD, them to go through PD for the north piece altogether. That would require maybe a little more work than what Mayberry was anticipating, and that they would have to participate in the site plan approval for PD for the whole north piece. If, that could be one approach, the board might want, could take.
Still confused a little bit.
Yeah.
So there's a third party that is interested in developing the site.
Yeah.
And, and Mayberry is the purchaser. They're going to turn around and sell the land to this third party?
Yes.
They buy it from us?
Right.
That's, that's the kind of scenario.
Yeah.
And we're going to pay a brokerage fee because we serve, we paid for, Mayberry paid a broker fee fee to somebody to sell the property to Mayberry, right?
Yes.
Pay a brokerage fee. Now, now they're going to turn around and sell it to a third party?
Yes. I don't, I, is that, I guess it's not surprising to me. I mean, I guess I always anticipated that let the free market do what it's going to do.
Oh, no, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand. And then the question was that you, that you raised, or the issue that you raised is, is it's a timing issue?
Yes.
And the third party wants to slow down the time or speed up the time?
The third party is ready to move forward faster than Mayberry's ready. They're still doing their due, they're still in their inspection period. So they'd be coming to site plan or to PD process before Mayberry's ready to do that. Maybe it's concerned that when they close on that land, they then, you know, the inspection period's over. They now have 12 months to get approval of their PD. When normally they'd still have another, probably closer to 15 months to do that. Plus they can do extensions, but just, that's their concern.
But isn't that their, kind of their problem? Why are they making their problem our problem with the new?
Only as much as, yeah, I don't, if that's the position the board wants to take, we can, they're asking us for consideration on that. We don't have to give them that consideration.
Still, my concern has always been that, you know, you develop the front half and the second half of that property, just.
But this is what they're proposing is to develop the back half first.
Back half first.
Before the front half develops, so.
Typically the other way around.
Yeah, typically it's the other way around.
Yeah, but these guys want the back.
How do we know that?
How do we? Well, they wouldn't be able, they'd be coming in with PD or for the site plan for that, that piece would be approved as phase one, and that's what they get the land use permit to build, so.
I don't think we were ever, at least myself, I wasn't ever looking for an entire PD for both sides. But the north side still has to work as, as a one piece. The traffic's got to flow the correct way. There has to be some, some type of discussion, or else you're going to have, I don't think we're going to take the best advantage of that piece of property.
Yeah.
From, especially from a traffic perspective. Because if there's not a, if there's no access out on the 59, everything, everything would have to come out onto.
Fenton Road.
Fenton Road.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that would be what's best for that.
Well, I think they would, I'm sure, look at for 1059, the Newberry Place concept had a drive off 59. I'm sure they would look to do that similarly.
I guess my question is how to, what's the process for us to go forward with?
We could do it in a way that says that north piece stays together as one PD, and that means you got to bring in a site plan for the whole site as an entire PD together. And that means, as it, in regards to just that north piece, Mayberry will have to speed up their game a little bit in order to give us the peace of mind on it, if that's what.
What are you guys, what are you guys' thoughts on that?
Well, the first thought that went through my mind was that if we agreed to amend the purchase agreement, are we in some way also agreeing in advance that we would agree to have high residential on that back half? Somewhat skipping the PD process?
No, no, no more than we haven't really agreed to, even though we said this, how many REUs go with the land, you're not beholden to say that's how many REUs you can build in the end, depending on what kind of development they bring forward. I think, I think you're protected there.
Because the park property is kitty corner to this parcel, right?
Yeah.
And then there's a church immediately to the west.
West.
Yeah.
And single family to the north.
Well, I think, I mean, if there is a concern there, that concern, what happened there was in 2005, when a couple hundred REUs were put on 30 acres of land. So I don't know that that's any different today than when that decision was made. And it certainly would, I mean, the future land use map, has that been the special planning area? You know, when that was approved, also identified that there would be higher density as an option there.
I guess my thought is if, you know, somebody out of the booze coming in who wants to go fast with the apartments, why can't we ask Mayberry to at least bring in a, you know, conceptual, right? I mean, some kind of site plan?
Yeah.
Wouldn't you feel?
Again, I don't think we can, I don't think we could just lop off the back 20 acres and say that's going to be a separate PD, as, as, some, some of the elements have to be worked out ahead of time. And I don't know exactly what that looks like, but to, to not have that discussion as part of.
A whole.
Like the approval process for them to do that, I don't know what we're really approving, we're allowing them to take the back 20 acres?
Well, unless.
And give it to somebody else, but we're not.
I think I'm hearing a consensus, correct me if I'm wrong, that if the north piece is in play, the north piece is treated as one PD, and it's got to come through together as one PD regardless of who's developing one piece of it, in order to protect all those interests. Is that the position of the board?
Joe, what do you think?
I don't know, I have mixed feelings about it. We're either going to slow down one of the, one of the developers, or we're going to speed up the other. I would hope they come in under one PD, but I don't know if, I mean, we could have sold that off differently when it was up for sale, and it'd be separate, it'd be separate development, so I don't know.
I think it could be more than one PD, but it still has to follow some of the, the basic elements are going to have to be.
Yeah, and that's what you got your planning commission for.
I understand that.
Well, and we have right of refuse on the whole design. I mean, that, that is there. I mean, and one way to look at it might be as if we still hold, held the properties, nobody, no purchase agreement. Somebody came to say, hey, I want to buy the back 20 from you, you can keep the front, the 10 frontage. Would we entertain that offer?
True.
Mike?
That's what I, that's what.
And the whole, the whole, the whole way that purchase agreement is structured is that, you know, we have, you know, every step of the way, the, the planning commission, the board has to be okay with the concept that's being presented for site plan. And if they don't get that, the deal's done anyway.
And I, I think Mayberry's experienced enough to know that depending on what the other developer puts in there is going to, it's going to definitely affect what he puts in there. So he's not going to let, you know, some undesirable type of building go up because it's going to affect what he's going to do. So I think that you're going to have that, plus you got your planning commission, not you, and you have to go through that approval process. So I don't think there's too much danger there for the township.
It'd be to Mayberry's advantage to be, to come through as one, because the second one to the table obviously is going to have the harder time to present the design that's compatible with what's already been approved.
That's right.
So.
They're going to want to complement each other, not.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Not in contrast.
So maybe not so much a PD for the entire thing, but knowing that we are going to have, you know, final site plan approval for.
We have a planning commission.
The back.
Aren't they going to have to come in as a PD anyways?
I think you're right, Joe.
Because wasn't, the special planning district was a PD.
Yes.
And that's how they got some of the high density, so they're going to have to come in under a PD anyway.
Yes.
But that's what they're saying. It could be two PDs.
Could be, end up being two PDs then.
Right. That's the way of planning.
Could be a second phase of the first one.
Right.
It's just, but the underlying elements, we, I think it would be wrong for us to have two PDs without them working together.
Is the higher density going to go on in the north side or the south side?
It's higher density on the north.
North side.
Because the north was conceptually, it was, you had multifamily in the middle with townhomes around, and then commercial on the front. South side had some of it, not, didn't have that much. It was a little denser, and then it became more traditional, single family towards the back.
Glenn, you have any thoughts?
My only thought is that when they start building, that's almost like a stimulus, you know? When people see the building going up, that may help Mayberry, you know, bring in their people, they need to bring in because, hey, look at this is going up here, it's high density, here's our customers right across the street. So that may help the whole process.
Right.
You know, by doing the back, I think we're protected, like we've all discussed already. And the pride piece of property is still available, I think it's a win-win situation.
Any other comments, questions?
So we will put together a language and bring that back, and I know that they're interested in doing that quickly, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, and also, there's going to be, there's going to be other issues that come up as this progresses. And I think with this particular issue, we could demonstrate that we do want to be a partner in this thing. Work, work with them as much as we can, because I think there's going to be bigger issues than this issue that we're going to have to tackle with them, so.
Anything else on that topic? Next one is 2015 manager goals.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I, I put together a draft as I had in the last couple of years, other than the process. This is your document. You can throw mine out and come up with your own, of course. And I offer these ideas as potential goals for my performance next year. They are, of course, all related to the strategic plan. And the competencies I made a couple of tweaks to from what we did last year. Happy to hear the board's thoughts on, on these.
Any comments from the board?
If it pleases the board, then we will go forth and do good.
Any other comments? Be none, we'll move on to item number 11C, manager job description.
This proposal is related to the organizational analysis, classification, compensation study that I've been going through. As part of that, been going through everybody's job description in the building and just trying to boil it down to a more concise summary of the roles, i.e. a page. And so I went through that exercise on my own job description. It wasn't hard because I pulled it right out of the statute for township superintendents, managers. And so I offer that to the board for consideration. No need to approve it tonight. I, I did also attach a copy of the original one that you approved before I came on board in 2006. Obviously many more pages, but I'm happy to hear any feedback on this draft to include it with the compensation classification study.
James, you mentioned that you went through this with the manager committee in your memo?
Well, I did pass it along to them. We had a very preliminary discussion last time we met. I haven't heard any necessarily comments since then. I know not everybody's been, there's been some other things with the members of that. They may have some comments tonight or thoughts.
I would like to see the, the manager, since they drafted the original job description, I would like to see the manager committee, is it Joe, Joe, is it Larry?
Larry. Do I know Larry well over this?
Go through that and make sure that they're comfortable with what's, because you basically take them three and a half pages and boil it down into one and make sure that there's.
Yeah, I'd given it to the committee. We, there was, we didn't necessarily have a long time to look at it the first time we met. And so if the, if the committee wants to take more time with that, sure.
Would that be okay with you, Joe?
Yeah.
Joe, would that be okay with you?
Yeah, I think that we, the manager committee, because we're going to be looking at, we're looking at the study that James has been providing, and I've been looking at some of the data. the data, in particular, you know, surrounding communities and similar-sized communities that he provided from MTA, and, you know, we're hoping to have a recommendation, I think, for the board to discuss at, at some point and then make a decision on.
Is that something we could have, do you have a timeline for that?
Well, for obvious reasons.
Right.
We haven't been able to get together and, and the three of us discuss.
Perhaps after the holidays, you can put a timeline together?
Are you, you're not in a hurry on any of this stuff, correct?
Uh, well, the job description, that could be, that's not a hurry. I mean, I, my asking for consideration is obviously at the board's pleasure. My performance review would be at the second meeting in January.
So it's timed, it'll be right around that time?
So about a month from now?
About a month from now.
Okay.
I think it'd be safe to say, why don't we shoot for, you know, kind of wrapping everything up by the second meeting in January? Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay, that sounds good.
James, that just brings to mind, have we set up the compensation committee, meeting commission?
We haven't set a meeting date ever.
Because that usually is January, too.
It would be starting in January.
January through February 15th, isn't it? I know the timeline's pretty tight for that.
Yeah, it is.
Would, so.
We just nominated those folks tonight on that.
We did not get the compensation commissioner, are you reappointing? We may want to take action on that then, because we, one's coming off every year.
I thought, I thought we had the other one.
I think we kept the, stayed this year.
All right.
So remind me tomorrow to take a look at that.
Well, we'd want to do it tonight.
I thought we were all, I thought it was, I thought it was clean out, my appointments.
Yeah, Bill Kane was staying.
Yeah, it may.
He is staying.
Okay.
He said he would.
So.
That's who came off.
Do we need to appoint him, is that what you're saying?
I have to appoint him.
We don't have it on the list, so he's just saying we need to make a motion to appoint.
Although, that commission probably would not be meeting before the sixth anyway, when you meet again, so.
Put it on there.
You could put it on the next one as well.
Okay.
Well, they get, they have to be sworn in and such?
Yeah, we'll swear them in the first time they meet.
Okay.
Because they'll be within the timeframe.
So that's okay then to wait until the sixth?
That's fine.
You're right, I forgot to add that one on there. Anything else for tonight's meeting?
Nope, move to adjourned.
Report.
Motion by trustee Kalani, second by trustee Harper. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? All right, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.